This is broader than that.
These are our voters.
Good morning. I'll call to order the November 8th, 2018 business meeting and ask the county administrator, Don Crupp, please take the role.
Yes, good morning, commissioners. We have Mr. Stephen Madcor here, serving as your county counsel, and Mary Rathke, serving as your clerk to the board this morning. I'll start the row call with Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
You.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Well, first, I'd like to announce that Commissioner Humbertston is out of country, and today we have Commissioner Reynolds from the Housing Authority. Welcome.
Thank you.
Because I believe the first item up is, Don, what is the first item?
So, you have to convene as the Housing Authority for the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
With that, we will convene as a Housing Authority, and I'd ask the clerk to read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda by title.
Okay, today's Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Approval to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the Housing Authority of Clackamas County and Clackamas County for the Director of Housing Development position, and approval of amendment number one to the Environmental Engineering Service Contract between the Housing Authority of Clackamas County and PBS Environmental. That concludes today's Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Does any commissioner want to remove any item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
A move to approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second.
We moved in second that we approved the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you.
And now, since the board were now adjourned as the Housing Authority, convene as the Board of County Commissioners. First up, we have a presentation.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is recognition for Veterans Day, and I'm going to invite Erica Silver, manager with our Health, Housing, and Human Services Department, up to provide the presentation for you.
Good morning. My name is Erica Silver, and as stated, I am a manager with the Social Services Division of Health, Housing, and Human Services. It's my honor to be here today and making a presentation to you for Veterans Day. How do I get? I'm sorry. Technical issues. The side one? It's just showing a picture of me, which is boring.
Oh, no. You have to look at here.
Okay, there. Okay. I'm sorry.
You have to kick it.
Have to kick it?
No, don't listen to Chair Bernard. Erica, use this as your slideshow. That one will always be the live TV.
The remote's not working, though? Does she hear me?
No. The remote's not working.
Oh, the remote? It's not working? Okay, I'll advance your slide for you. Sorry.
Okay. So, sorry, technical difficulties. We are here today in honor of the service of our veterans. There's over 300,000 veterans within the state of Oregon, more than 29,000 in Clackamas County, and there's 149 known homeless veterans. I also want to acknowledge that we have veterans in our county workforce, making meaningful impacts in every department on county services and infrastructure. So, Clackamas County has established some goals for veterans. Employment training and education opportunities so that veterans can obtain living wage jobs, easy access to VA benefits through the County Veterans Service Office, and also that homeless veterans have the services and supports needed to regain stable housing. This year, I want to focus on the work of the Clackamas County Veterans Service Officers, and they are Janice Harlan, Heather Mewald, Gina Thomas, and Felicia Riddings, and Jackie Bauer is the very competent office assistant. All our Veterans Service Officers are accredited through the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs. They have to go through extensive training to gain that accreditation, and they also have to go through testing in order to keep their accreditation. So, during last fiscal year, they met with 1,776 veterans and family members. They filed 729 initial compensation claims. Right now, there's a delay due to some changes with the VA system, so the numbers that I'm telling you are actually lower than the real numbers, and hopefully, that will catch up soon. But they had at least 502 claims granted, and they generated new federal monetary benefits of at least $7.6 million. So, that's pretty good for about a $700,000 initial upfront cost of their office. So, that would be, what, 1,000 percent return on investment? That's pretty good. So, I wanted to tell you a few stories of some of the veterans that have been helped. These stories are very detailed, but I think they illustrate the fine work and the huge difference that these services make. So, recently, a 97-year-old, a World War II combat veteran, he fought in all the major battles from North Africa to northern Italy. He had a Combat Infantry Badge and five Bronze Stars. He was rated at only a 10 percent disability for hearing loss. He had suffered a good part of his life with PTSD. His family, back in 2010, had prepared a claim for him for his PTSD, but that claim was denied. The family helped him appeal, but he was still awarded 0 percent. So, alcohol had been one of his early coping mechanisms, but he quit drinking 40 years ago, and the original VA decision appeared to penalize him for his recovery from alcoholism. And he always felt slighted that the VA did not acknowledge his suffering, and he gave up on trying until this past August. Due to his age, the CVSO was able to get him an expedited increase from 10 percent to 70 percent, which got him over $1,200 more a month, and he was really happy with a little extra money to spend with his family. He finally felt validated for his service and action and the toll that it took on his lives and his relationships. Obviously, he should have been awarded the higher rate much earlier, but it was very nice that we were able to help him, and now he's got that money in hand every single month. The next one is an 87-year-old Korean War Army veteran. He visited the VSO in June. He was in the infantry, sorry, infantry, front lines, and he was the only survivor of his unit of seven in a battle to take a hill. So, in the 65 years since his honorable discharge, he had never filed a claim for service-connected disability despite his hearing literally being shot. The VSO discovered that he had pictures from Korea, as well as letters that he had written his father, and with details from the front lines. And so, these are some quotes from some of those letters. "We should have enough firepower to stop them unless those tanks open up on us. We lost three-quarters of our marching gun platoon. I guess I am sure lucky to still be alive." So, a fully developed claim for service-connected disability for both hearing loss and PTSD was filed in July, and due to the VSO's professionalism, attention to detail, and extensive knowledge of the VA rules, less than three months later, this veteran was awarded 100 percent service-connected disability, which equates to more than $3,000 a month plus one month retroactive. So, imagine that. 65 years. The next one, if I can get it to turn, was a female Kuwait veteran. She initially filed a PTSD claim in 2007 and related to military sexual assault and being fired on in Kuwait in 2000. She had been in continuous appeals for 10 years when she came to the CVSO and asked us to help her at an upcoming appeal hearing. The CVSO reviewed the previous VA decisions and exams and submitted more records, including a counselor's validation of severe PTSD. The CVSO found a technicality that the VA had made a mistake because they relied on a medical examiner's opinion that her PTSD could not be service-connected because she had only spent a week in Kuwait. However, there was a formal report in her file in the military records that her vehicle had been fired upon, and that was evidenced by bullet holes in the vehicle. So, at appeal, we made that argument, and the board concurred. A new exam was ordered, and the examiner agreed about her PTSD, but that it was mild. However, due to the strong medical evidence submitted by the CVSO, the VA disregarded that examiner's opinion and rated her 50 percent PTSD from 2007, when she had initially filed her claim, to the latest exam, and then 100 percent from the latest exam forward. So, just a year since her first visit to the CVSO, her award was $2,973 a month and plus a $92,000 retroactive payment. She said that now she is much healthier. She can afford to go to the VA for helpful workshops and get her much-needed dental work taken care of, and she stated if you're patient enough and work with the system, it can be really rewarding eventually. So, those are just three examples. We definitely want to get to the veterans much earlier, you know, than the 95-year-old and the 87-year-old, and so, with the additional lottery funds that came in this past year, we have added an outreach-focused Veterans Service Officer, and we're focusing on reaching out to medical providers and also directly to the veterans in medical settings about the presumptive conditions from Agent Orange exposure, and we're expanding our capacity to connect with veterans earlier and obviously to maximize their financial benefits and their other benefits. So, it's really much more community-based and really being out there in as many different settings. So, gonna talk about a few other programs that I know you're aware of. The Clackamas Veterans Workforce Program, and Jennifer Harvey, as well as Kenny, are both here. Down at Community Solutions, served 41 veterans. 78 percent became employed. 75 percent were still employed at 90 days, and that far exceeded their goal of 55 percent. The average wage of $1,673 an hour was 19 percent higher than last year's average, and the jobs included manufacturing, construction, healthcare, transportation, security, retail, customer service, warehouse, the whole range of jobs. And then, ending veteran homelessness. Aaron and Dave, I'm not sure if anybody else is here from that team. Oh, Tito. So, Social Services has three programs, and we house 62 homeless veteran households. That's 79 adults and 14 children. VASH vouchers administered by the Housing Authority more than doubled from last year, from 51 up to 106. Elizabeth is here, maybe someone else. There's 51 vets currently housed. There's 10 more vouchers that have been issued and that are in the housing search. There's 10 on hold for the new Pleasant Avenue Veterans Housing, and there's 35 still available. So, we're really starting to make a dent, and I'm really proud to be part of this and to be able to report that to you. The Veterans Village has sheltered 12 veterans. The first one was just approved for housing. Within those 12 veterans, there's one female, there's three veterans that are 62 and older, there's four people of color, and there's one with a physical disability. So, all the veterans are vulnerable, but then, some of those are also additionally even more vulnerable, being out there. And so, that safety off the streets that that Veterans Village provides really cannot be understated. We were also selected recently by Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs as one of two Oregon counties to pilot a new volunteer veteran outreach program for aging veterans that ODVA has invested in, and the county was selected due to the variety of effective, innovative, and creative ways that we support our veterans. So, I listed the contact information for the County Veterans Service Office for anybody that might be watching on the cable network, and I've also listed the contact information for the Veterans Workforce Program, and really just want to end with a heartfelt thanks to all of our veterans. I don't know what we would do without you. Thank you very much.
Well, I understand that we have a number of employees in the audience who are veterans, and would you please stand? And I'd say we've come a long way from when Paul and I got here a number of years ago with Veterans Service Officers and the services we provide, and obviously, the revenue that is generated in the county just by the fact that they're receiving their benefits. I'm a little shocked to see how old some of these people are before they finally got them, and probably part of that reason is I know that some veterans don't really go or don't believe they deserve the services, which is absolutely not true, and we're here to help make sure you get what you deserve. And I want to thank Martha for all her efforts over the years, and Paul, and the rest of the commission for making this program appear to be very successful, and we will continue to dedicate the resources we need to make sure that the veterans receive, you know, the benefits that they deserve. And I heard a little bit about the one gentleman who was in our temporary pods and has been approved for housing. That's pretty quick, considering it's only been open for a few weeks or a month now. So, congratulations, Paul, in your efforts to physically move those structures there. And anyway, you were up first.
Yep. So, I have a comment, but I have a question first for Erica. Currently, if a veteran walks in our VSO office for the first time, how, let's just say they just abruptly show up, can they be served right away, or what's currently the waiting list if they can't, or the waiting period of time?
We definitely will do our best. However, the Veterans Service Office works best on an appointment basis, so we can give them some basic information. If we have somebody that's free, we'll definitely see them, but we really want to make sure that we have the time to devote, which is, in some cases, for the first meeting, it could be one to two hours, depending on what we're going through and what their situation exactly is. So, what we really ask veterans to do is to call in first, and then we'll make sure that we have the time. It's only a week, or sometimes even a little bit less than that, before we can see them. But if they are homeless, we will prioritize those, and we'll always try to fit those in either the same day or the next business day.
Well, thank you for sharing that. So, it was about seven and a half years ago, I was going through the county college program, and one whole day or session was about veterans and veteran services, and that's what I learned about the Lake County, because they, about the same size county, a little bit smaller, about 50,000, 60,000 less people than us, but they really had, showed a spreadsheet where they returned so many benefits, earned benefits, I will say, by the way, back to veterans, and we were substantially lower but had a higher population. I said, well, what's with that? And they explained that was really our capacity, so the more VSOs we had on hand, the more ability to meet. And so, I met with our staff and realized that when a veteran walked in for the first time, that it was weeks an appointment was required. Now, we're a week to a few days, which is far better. So, we increased that from two VSOs to then three, and now four. So, I just want to just acknowledge that that's obviously made a substantial difference in the wait times. That's good to read here, and I just want to just applaud our staff's efforts and the boards from the beginning, their support for initiating the VSOs, the Veterans Village, and all the things that we've been doing. So, it's just very pleasing, especially the fact that one of our first residents at the Veterans Village has already found some housing, so that's fantastic.
Great. Martha?
Yeah, and I just wanted to mention the Veterans Village, because that really is the purpose of it, is to give folks, just get some immediacy of getting them off the street, but it's not permanent. The whole focus really is to get people stabilized with a clean place to, you know, have showers and bathrooms, a safe place to sleep, that has some warmth, warming areas there, and really to use the resources we have to move them into permanent housing. And I'm hopeful that with the passage of the housing bond that we just had, Clackamas County is working to increase capacity, because that's what we need. It's just, we need the there-theres. We need the permanent housing. We need the bridge housing, but we really need to have additional, whether it's public, private-public partnerships, housing for folks for 30 percent below area median income, 60 percent below area median income, and really build that. We just don't have enough units. That's it. So, building the units, I think, with the passage of this, is not only going to help our veterans, which is one of our key priorities, but I think getting people housed across the county at this point. And I know Erica has been essential in all of this work, so thank you, Erica. But I'm going to put a pitch in for you guys, because, Don, they have four VSOs. They need more room in their office. That should be a top, right? Everybody nod their heads. They need more room. They need to have another desk. They need to have a larger area to work in, because they do such important work. So, I don't know where we are with the facilities expansion, but I'm sure commissioners like to see that move up to the number one spot, so the people that do the work have the space and the equipment they need to really be out there and shine. So, thank you.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you. I just want to give a compliment to the community of Clackamas County. I think I can speak for all of us when I say that when we are out in the community, connecting with our constituents, we all experience a much appreciated outpouring of respect, contribution, and care from our citizens in Clackamas County for our veterans. And when we look at upcoming Veterans Day, which is just a few days away, we can reflect and be thankful. We have an incredible democracy. We embrace freedom in this country, and really, it is from the work, the hard work of men and women that serve in our armed forces that we are able to experience the life that we have here in America, and it's very much honored. In Clackamas County, we are a community that really cares, and I appreciate everyone out there for that.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to thank you for coming, taking the time to come to our meeting, and appreciate your service to the nation.
Photo.
A photo. I'd like to take a photo, if you're willing.
Have all our veterans come on up.
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
All right. With that, we're on to citizen communication. We have Bill Simons and Mike Foley. Go ahead and come on up to the dais. Mike?
Yes.
Bill, you're from Brightwood area.
Yes.
Thank you for taking the time to come down.
Thank you very much for hearing me this morning. My name is Bill Simons. I am a small business owner in Welch's. My wife and I own a Welch's Mountain Building Supply Store, and we are also residents of the Brightwood community. We live basically at the end of the road on McIntyre, McIntyre Road. McIntyre Road actually shows up on county maps as continuing another mile past our house, and that section of road has essentially been abandoned for decades now. Until recently, and you guys may be familiar with the private logging operation that took place up there, where a particular disreputable developer who is notorious in Oregon purchased a 20-acre parcel for the sole purpose of extracting the timber resources from the property. And that project impacted two groups of people. Essentially, the people that live around that property at the base of a very steep slope, they're concerned about water quality and sediment transport to the salmon-bearing streams, and landslide hazards. So, they were very concerned about the project. And then, the other group of people, which I'm a part of, were the people affected by the logging-hauling road that he intended to use. So, he used McIntyre Road to bring his heavy equipment to the property. He had to rebuild a mile section of road, crossing several major creek crossings and a number of minor creek crossings, putting in temporary culverts, and it was a very problematic, difficult job, and this was not this last summer, but the summer before, 2017. And so, he conducted his logging operation. They cut down all the trees. They brought not all of the wood out at that point. They had to leave some on the ground because they ran out of time, but that severely impacted, you know, the residents that live along that road during the operation. And we tried everything we could to stop the operation, to work with him, and nothing worked, because he did his homework and found a 1928 document that designated McIntyre Road as a county road, County Road 1359. It was designated in 1928, and it had been a logging road at one time, and then was a Bonneville power line access road for some period of time until Bonneville found a better access, and then after that point, it was essentially abandoned and became an off-road vehicle use area and causing damage to BLM. So, BLM and the county have, you know, essentially tried to decommission the road, but it still stands as a public road, and we would like to submit your support for vacating that portion of the road, which it should have been long ago, and we'd seek your support in helping us to vacate that portion of the road. I think I'm out of time. Thank you.
All right. We'll look into it.
Yeah, let's get that.
Right now, it's all paved?
No, only a portion of the part that's used is paved and county-maintained. The other mile and a half section of the road is, it's not drivable, because they've taken out the culverts, but it still exists on the county maps as a we could to stop the operation, to work with him, and nothing worked, because he did his homework and found a 1928 document that designated McIntyre Road as a county road, County Road 1359. It was designated in 1928. And it had been a logging road at one time, and then was a Bonneville power line access road for some period of time, until Bonneville found a better access. And then after that point, it was essentially abandoned and became a off-road vehicle use area, and causing damage to BLM. So BLM and the county have, you know, essentially tried to decommission the road. And, but it still stands as a public road. And we would like to submit your support for vacating that portion of the road, which it should have been long, long ago. And we'd seek your support in helping us to vacate that portion of the road. I think I'm out of time. Thank you.
All right. We'll look into it.
Yeah, let's get that.
Right now, it's, it's all paved?
No, only a portion of the part that's used is paved and county maintained.
Uh huh.
The other mile and a half section of the road is, it's not drivable, because they've taken out the culverts, but it still exists on the county maps as a public access.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I know Dan is here.
Oh, Dan, did you want to say something?
Oh, no.
Oh, no. Well, he.
He can talk afterwards.
Yeah.
Okay, because he's, he's the guy. Yeah.
Yep.
He's the road guy.
Oh, excellent, excellent, yes.
It's not where the Mount Hood Freeway wasn't going.
Thank you, okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Mike?
Yes, thank you guys for letting me speak this morning. I'm here, and I know you guys get tired of hearing this probably every week, but I'm here today just to say thank you to all of you for your service to our community. You guys do a wonderful job. I'll start off by thanking those of you who attended the candidate forum a few weeks ago. What an important event. Brendan Durbin and the folks who put that together. It's amazing opportunity for all of us, and your support means a lot. And then I volunteer for an Oregon Office on Disability and Health, a statewide organization. And one of our members, Darren Umbarger, from Pendleton, has MS, been in a wheelchair thirty years, and invented a high-speed charging system for wheelchairs. Darren and I have got to know each other over the years, and that committee, he asked me if I could see about placing some in the valley. And he suggested that I contact Commissioner Fisher, who had served with him on Disability Rights Oregon. I did. Sonia listened to me. She knew Darren. She knew the product. Made a couple of calls. And pretty soon, Rick Gurin from Forest and Parks put one in Barton Park. We had an amazing celebration that day. Sonia was there, and that Wheatfall was there, and gave a great speech on diversity and inclusion. And along with the park board, and our representative, Kurt Schrader, sent a beautifully worded letter on his support. Great event, and all of that due to Sonia's efforts. We also, since then, we're working with the architect in Lake Oswego. They're going to put a charging system in their new city hall that they're building. Tammy Stimple, who just re-elected as mayor of Gladstone, is putting in three in Gladstone. And so it started, and Sonia deserves ninety-eight, nine percent of the credit. And then thank her for that. Last June, on the Aging Service Committee I serve on here in the county, they asked that, we have a commissioner come to our September meeting this year, the one that kicks off the, the season for us. I suggested that Commissioner Savas be asked. He had talked to me recently before that, and I think what he said to me was, I listen to you old people, because you vote. And he's right, we do. And so.
I'm not sure that's verbatim.
So we extended him an offer to come and, and speak to our group in our September all-day meeting. He came, gave us a wonderful presentation. After he left, and the conversation went on, Paul, you picked up a few votes. So thank you for your time and your service to us. And on the wheelchair charging systems, we've placed now seven here in the city, because, talking about veterans, Jeff Jorgensen, our building director, facility manager here, who's served twenty-two years in the Navy, and sustained a traumatic back injury while doing that, and with six months in a wheelchair, he's placing six in facilities, including this building. And so I'm thrilled at that, and all of the things that you folks do to make Clackamas County a place that I want to live in. So thank you guys for all you do. And, and one other thing, I know I'm out of time, but you guys also just approved my service for three years on the leaders in equity, diversity, and inclusion. I had my first meeting with Marie and that group last month. We're doing an all-day thing in a week on Saturday, where we're planning what we're going to do. It's something that's really near and dear to my heart. And thank you for, for including me. Anytime I think that a group like you guys gives an old seventy-four-year-old blind guy in terrible shape, a three-year commission, I'm so excited about that. And I love your optimism. So, thank you guys again for all you do. You make a big difference in all of our lives.
It sounds like we should thank you for all you do. I mean, like you said, you're an old guy, an old blind guy, but we don't, and, thank you very much. And, you know, we never get tired of hearing thank you, because this is sometimes a thankless job. But we're, we all enjoy what we do. And part of that, I think, is expressed in how you, your comments today, you know. Sonia, here's something. Somebody reach out. It gets done. Paul attends a meeting. And, you know, we're here for, that's why we're here. We're here to listen. We're here to help. And thank you for all you do. Paul, I think.
Yeah, I just want to just point out, we already have, but I just want to just amplify on the fact that, you know, when I first was exposed to the Aging and, and Aging Council, and disabilities, seniors and disabilities councils, and all, all the work that you guys do, was way back. Dick Jones, I think I mentioned him. I know he first exposed me to that group. And I learned a lot about the transportation needs for, you know, senior and disabled. And just wanted to, number one, acknowledge that the work you guys do is so darn important to get that message out, and not just in Clackamas County, but your role in the region as well. And I had the, the privilege and the honor of trying to represent that, that body of work, that effort, advocacy on transportation issues with TRIMET recently. I'm at their monthly meeting here just, just last month. So I'm trying to do everything I can. And, and as we, as people run through the cycle, we need to make sure we're recruiting in more people to volunteer on these committees that you sit on. So thank you for all the work you do, and all the people on your committees. It really does matter, and it really does make a difference.
Well, I think, I was just recently appointed to a metro transportation board, and it serves three counties, you know, Washington, Multnomah, and Clackamas. And through the years, when they disperse the money they have for transportation, Clackamas has not fared well. We're loading up. We now have five members from the county on that board, and we meet in January to decide what to do with that money. And we're going to get some more for our county. So yeah, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Les, you're up.
Good morning. I want to thank him before he gets out the door. You might think I'm kidding, but those are the people that inspire me. Makes it a lot easier to get up here if you've been in a war. Makes it a lot easier to get up here if you keep things in perspective. I'm Les Poole. I'm living beautiful Gladstone. Couple of quick thoughts. One, before I, before I get into a couple of issues, I better, I better digress. My issue that I wanted to talk about today was the vets, and it's already been well-covered. And that was an inspirational seven minutes there. And it's great to see a citizen come up here and get a response. I get folks that call me, or come to a meeting here, and they look at citizen comments, and they go, boy, when I go elsewhere, it's not like that. Boy, when I went, three minutes and two seconds, and they told me, thank you, and then they flushed the toilet, and the next person came up and spoke, and they flushed the toilet. So the culture here, and the ability for citizens to appear and speak, is far better than elsewhere. And it took us a long time to get there. So everything we can do to respectfully communicate, I'm all for. One thing I want to mention is, I was thinking it was almost unfortunate, in a way, that we didn't have a runoff. I can't think how long it's been since we, we didn't have a runoff for the county commission. Sonia and Paul were both obviously elected last May. And, and not that I wanted them to suffer through an expensive or time-consuming campaign, but had there been an election here in the county, we would have had a more robust conversation about issues, transportation, tolling, et cetera. Those things would have come up more in the, in the forums and things. But regardless of that, the election's over, and we, we're in the same place we were before the election. Some things are going great, some things aren't. It's a mixed bag. And all of a sudden, another year has flown by. Another year has flown by. So when January comes, I hope we can focus on transportation. I hope we're real careful about how much exuberance we have over what Metro will provide in terms of that housing bond. Lot of promises there, and a lot of money on the line. So that, that was a real tough one. That was a real tough one. Not a lot of debate over it, but the issue is so critical. And I spoke at Metro recently, and I, I asked them after the first of the year to place more credence, more consideration in the economic impacts of what they're doing out there. And I don't think they're going to take me up on it, but I'll ask them again in January. I, I want to say one other thing, and I was kind of pleasantly surprised to see Dan Johnson, head of Transportation Development, in the back of the room, because he spoke here recently, and I wanted to compliment Dan. He, he knows about planning. He really knows about planning. He's been here a long time. And I, I think it was, it was good to see Dan move into that position. And he's always a straight shooter, with me and with others, you know where he stands. And that's what transparency's about. That's what transparency's about. So I look forward to working with him and with you on the transportation issues. Last week, Commissioner Savas concluded his comments with some really good observations about the significance of the Sunrise Corridor. And that's something like the opposition to the tolling that we all agree on, and we can all work on. And I look forward to doing that. And I look forward to the time when, when my friend Richard Langdon, sitting up here in his seat, comes back and has a few words for us. So thank you all.
Thank you. I did just come back from China on Tuesday. I think it was Tuesday, yeah, Tuesday. And they toll everything. There's also not a lot of options to get off the road. So they, there's, you know, you go fifteen miles before there's an exit, and then immediately into a toll booth. And of course, we were with the government folks, and they saluted us, and we drove through. So it'd be, a matter of fact, I gotta ask Ken to find out about what they charge normally to go through those toll booths, because I don't have any idea. But they are investing in their roads in capacity, I can assure you. You'd be amazed.
Paul?
Is that Paul? Yeah.
Yeah. I just want to just, the comment about the runoff, but more along the lines of the debate. Well, I think that that is a real healthy thing, but I think it was really, for the most part, I was kind of disappointed, not necessarily about my race, but even in during my race, that there really was a lack of an opportunity to really debate. There's a difference between a candidate forum, where you had a minute, and you respond to a question, or maybe you have two minutes to respond to a question, but you really can't really debate the issues. But in this November cycle, I went to every one I could, candidate forums, really what they were, and opportunity for debate. And I was, I was a little bit taken aback by the lack of participation by a number of the candidates. And in one particular one, it was, it was just all, all the, from one party and not from the other party. And the one party was noticeably absent from that. And I was, I just thought it was really important, because I wanted, number one, and it was, it's not just about candidates. It's also about the, some of the ballot measures. But I really wanted to learn more and meet some of these folks, and I didn't have really that opportunity. But I think we need to have, as opposed to candidate forums are a good, I mean, I'm not going to dismiss those. They, they do provide some opportunity to listen to folks and candidates, and also to hear what's on their mind. But I think really, we need to really have a lot more healthy debate in a public forum on some of these tough issues that we're facing. And so maybe, maybe that will come about. I think it did on the regional level, to some degree, on some of the, I know we had a governor's debate, and number ones like that. But on some of the local issues that were before us in Clackamas County, it really just wasn't enough. That's just my comment for today on that.
All right. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of Amendment Number Thirteen for the Intergovernmental Agreement with the State of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority for operation as the local public health authority for Clackamas County. Approval of a service agreement with Legacy Laboratory Services, partnering with Clackamas County Health Centers Division for laboratory testing services. Approval of a ground lease between Clackamas County Health, Housing, and Human Services and the Clackamas County Development Agency pertaining to property located at 16575 Southeast 115th Avenue. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, consent to the annexation of a portion of Southeast Armstrong Circle to the City of Happy Valley. Consent to the annexation of a portion of Southeast Hemrich Road to the City of Happy Valley. Consent to the annexation of a portion of Southeast Hemrich Road to the City of Happy Valley. Consent to, to the annexation of a portion of Southeast Crosswater Way to the City of Happy Valley. Approval of the termination of the construction contract between Clackamas County and PCR for the Jennings Lod's pedestrian improvement project. Under the Finance Department, approval of contracts with National Interpreting Services for on-call interpreter services for Clackamas County departments. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under Public and Government Affairs, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Westland for payment of services related to the Willamette Falls Lock State Commission. Under Technology Services, approval of a service-level agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and Portland General Electric for eight fiber connections along Highway 26. Approval of Amendment Number Two to the service-level agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and the City of Milwaukee for dark fiber connection. Approval of service-level agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and Westland-Wilsonville School District for redundant school connections. And under the Development Agency, approval of a ground lease between Clackamas County Health, Housing, and Human Services and Clackamas County Development Agency pertaining to the property located at 16575 Southeast 115th Avenue. That concludes today's consent agenda.
Do any commissioners want to remove or pull an item for discussion in the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We moved and seconded that. We approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next up is the county administrator update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a couple of items to share with you. One, our Water Environment Services Department has an educational campaign called Keep the Wipes Out, and that campaign has been selected to receive a prestigious award from the National Association of Clean Water Agencies. The campaign was designed to educate county residents about the costly damages to our west infrastructure and equipment that are caused by these flushable wipes, which don't dissolve like toilet paper would dissolve. And so we received the award for our educational campaign in February. Great work on the part of our Water Environment Services folks and our Public and Governmental Affairs folks. And then we got very nice comments for the staff at our Transportation and Development Department. Couple of weeks ago, we had a representative from Kingdom Builders Construction, who spent quite a bit of time at Transportation and Development in the Permit Center to acquire permits for a project. Most of the time, he was working directly with our planner, Ben Blessing. And he wanted to share these words about his experience. "I, I wanted to express my delight in working with Ben today. I did not feel rushed at all, and I felt like Ben was..." I did not feel rushed at all and I felt like Ben was willing to spend the necessary amount of time needed to help me through the process. As the face of Clackamas County, I felt he did an exemplary job in customer service. He gave sound advice and I definitely felt like he was on my side. I am very pleased with my visit today. Thanks again." And so I wanted to thank the gentleman from Kingdom Builders and express my great appreciation to Ben for his outstanding service. Finally, I just have a couple of announcements to make. It's important folks know that the Board of County Commissioners will not have a regular business meeting on November the 15th and November the 22nd. Next week, the Board will be attending the Association of Oregon Counties Conference in Eugene. And then of course, the following week, November 22nd, is the Thanksgiving holiday. So that our next regular business meeting will be on Thursday, November 29th, and that will be held in the evening at 6:00 PM here in the Board's hearing room. And finally, I also wanted to announce that on Monday, of course, that is Veterans Day and our offices will be closed Monday, November 12th in observance of Veterans Day. So thank you.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, I just wanted to give the backstory on the wipeout campaign. So Judge Darling, who was our juvenile court judge for quite some time, called me up right after I became a commissioner and said that she did an informal survey of the clerks in the courthouse who were mothers and asked if they knew that flushing wipes was not a good thing to do. And they did not have that knowledge. And so she is the one that came up with this idea. And Drenda Howitt is the person who facilitated that with PGA and our own PGA's Katie, who is involved with a lot of the work with the CPOs. Her baby is the face of the wipeout campaign. And it really was a collaborative effort. But it goes to show that an idea from one constituent to a commissioner can become the receipt of national awards. And I wasn't aware of the Clean Water Award. I was in the National Association of Counties Conference and able to receive the award from our national organization. But that is just wonderful. It's really important to get the word out about what is okay to do with our sewer system. And it's important that we share that information. So thank you for letting me know, letting all of us know.
Great. Well, now we have Commissioner Communications and first up is Martha.
Well, you know, one of the things I want to let folks know, and I think is pretty important, that November 11th is also the, the 100th anniversary of Armistice Day. And that, of course, was when World War I, essentially it was a cessation of hostilities on the Western Front of World War I, which took effect at the 11 o'clock, 11 o'clock in the morning, the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month of 1918. And one of the reasons I'm thinking about this is not only it's the 100th anniversary, but having grandchildren that are Americans and British citizens, both in England, every year at that time. They actually started in 1919. The first Armistice Day was at Buckingham Palace, actually. And at 11 o'clock across the nation, they have two moments of silence, and I thought I'd share that with people. And it's across England and, and other areas. And the two minutes of silence, the first minute is for the 20 million that died during that conflict. And the second minute is remembering all the mothers, the childrens, the wives, the grandmothers, who were left behind. Because that was the war to end all wars. And as we know, history did repeat itself. It was not the war to end all wars, but it was probably one of the first modern wars that really, really used technology. And the amount of young, wiped out a generation of young men as the First World War, just a whole generation gone. And I do think that's something as well, that we, we would do well not, not to forget that. And essentially, what's going to happen, and I'm going to move to the arts piece right now, because I wanted to make sure that people knew, knew about this. So in remembrance, there's going to be a play this weekend. New Century Players presents Not About Heroes, Friday and Saturday, November 9th and 10th at 7:30 PM, Sunday, November 11th at 2:00 PM. This is going to be at the Rex Putnam Black Box Theater. And we don't have it on my, on my handout here, here, but I do want to let people know about it, because it's set during World War I. And it's a play about the poetic life and the interrelationship between two of the finest Great War poets, Wilfred Owen and Siegfried Sassoon. And this is told by means of letters and poetry. And it really paints a very vivid picture of that war. So again, it's Black Box Theater in Rex Putnam High School, Friday and Saturday at 7:30 in a 2:00 PM matinee. But if we want to celebrate, or not celebrate, but remember with dignity and respect Armistice Day, I would, I would ask people to, to think about that and to take that two minutes of silence, not just, again, for armistice, but for all the wars and all the people that we have lost during these, these conflicts. So just, so just a little bit of history today with that. So let's move to arts and culture. I'll talk a little bit more about that. And this is, the city of Lake Oswego is also going to have an honor their service, a Veterans Day tribute. They're going to be partnering with the Lake Oswego Veterans Memorial to honor those who have served our country and helped preserve our many freedoms. And it includes two inspirational speakers. It's going to be Sunday, November 11th at Foothills Park. And Willamette Falls Symphony presents Celebrating 100 Years of Polish Independence. And it's going to be their latest performance, featuring conductor Mark Pearlman presenting Winanaski, I'm probably not saying this correctly, so I apologize. Violin Concerto Number Two, Darren Qual's soloist Noskoski, Symphony poem Up 66, The Step, and Minarski, Symphony in F Minor, Opus 14, Polonia. And that is also going to be on Sunday, November 11th, 1:00 to 2:00 PM at Milwaukee High School Auditorium, Milwaukee. Sounds like you could go to the symphony from 1:00 to 2:00 and then go to see the matinee of the Not About Heroes play. I think they're kind of at least relatively speaking in the same area. Okay, so let's go to the word of the week, and there's no surprise here. Veteran. Thanks staff, you, they do a great job. They help me, well, they put this together for me. A former member of the armed forces. Did you know? Veteran was first used as a word in the early 1500s. As we celebrate Veterans Day this year, let us not forget the sacrifices of all of our veterans that have paid the ultimate price so that we may have life, liberty and freedom. So there we go. Thank you, folks.
Commissioner Savas.
We can change your order?
Well, Ken's not here.
Okay.
Stop.
All right.
Oh, did you already stop?
No.
Oh, we don't even have you on here. Oh, Sonia Fisher. Yeah, you're up next.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it was a busy week getting ready for the election that happened on Tuesday. As I'm sure everyone knows, the Metro Housing Bond passed, as did the constitutional amendment 102, which means we here, our team here in Clackamas County, we have a heavy lift. We have a lot of responsibility. And I believe we're ready for the task. I was very pleased that at the Home Builders Forecast, there was discussion about how Clackamas County in the region is ready to proceed with increasing the housing supply for those that are struggling in our community. We have a very good housing authority. We have done a lot of thinking. We have our staff ready to, we've done a lot of collaborations. We have our values. We know that we want to promote safe, secure communities. We know we have a value of mixed income housing. We have done a lot of work and as a commission, we are ready for this challenge. However, I am very sensitive to while this did pass in Clackamas County, there are many people in our community, about I think 49%, I'm not sure if we have the final count, it might have been 48%, I'm not quite sure, but they did not support the Metro Housing Bond. And so as a commission, I'm trusting that I have the collaboration of my teammates here to listen, to be mindful, to enter into conversations with those that have a different view. Because it's our responsibilities of the leaders of this community to listen to all perspectives and to use these resources wisely, efficiently and effectively. So we have a heavy lift, we have a task to do, and I believe we're up to it, and let's go forth and do good.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, I'm going to change the rotation here of how we do this, because I wanted to end on a note about Veterans Day. So I'm going to start with the dog. So wait for Mary to put up the dog. This is Mickey. Mickey is a soft and silky little guy with so much love and happiness in his heart that he wants to share with you. He can be a bit bouncy when he is excited and wants your attention. So hopefully, you'll have plenty of love to give him as well. He will need grooming, so his fur stays nice and silky. He is an older guy at 10 years of age, so children in the house should be at least nine years of age and understand that he may not be interested in playing like a younger dog. For more information about Mickey and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services, 503-655-8628, or our website at www.clackamas.us/dogs. I did want to talk about, and I'll just switch rotation a little bit, just to talk about the housing bond first, because Commissioner Fisher brought that up. I was excited because I actually saw the first returns, I think it was 51 or 50.5% support from Clackamas County on the bond. So I was excited about that. And I just want to remind people that we, when you see someone out there who is homeless, and whether they are a veteran or they are a, a younger family, or a woman with children, whatever it may be, that that is something that, it really in our society, as wealthy as we are as a society, it, it just shouldn't be. So this is something at the very minimum for people who either, where they have a disability, whether they are seniors especially, it's just a situation that's just intolerable. And so I'm pleased, I've been pleased all along about this effort and for the people we're going to serve. What I was concerned about all along, and still, still am concerned, that we're not going to be able to house as many people as we would like, but I think our goal really, and I appreciate Commissioner Fisher's comments about trying to, a bit, in my words, really maximize what we can do with these dollars and be as efficient with them as possible. It's been my, from past work sessions, I've been pretty adamant and persistent that we make sure that we get our fair share of that, that we can put those dollars to work and, and soon as possible, and leverage that as much as we can. I think there really ought to be, and my concern, if you look at that bond, part of that bond says to replace existing housing. And I'm hoping that we can build as much new, because we need capacity more than we, more than anything. I mean, it's really about capacity. So I'm excited about the opportunity and also on the consent agenda today was hiring a person positioned for three years to actually take charge of that effort. So that was part of our, part of our efforts and we'll do the best we can. But I think it ought to be a contest amongst the region and how many units we can build, how many people we can house, and see if we can exceed those numbers that were put forth by the campaign. Going to transition a little bit into, into Wes and NCPRD, just a, just a comment. So Wes is a, basically a new organization made up of CCSD 1, Sewer District and part of the county, and Tri-Cities, another part of the county, and also our Surface Water Agency. And something that's always given me a little bit of pause and concern is that we, the Board of those districts, now the Board of Wes, if you will, should, in my opinion, be meeting on somewhat of a regularly occurring basis, and we have not. And not so much on the west side, but certainly on the park side, there's a lot of anxiety because we used to meet in some form on a monthly basis. We're not doing that. And I think that we have a responsibility, got to remember it's a district, and if you go to a water district meeting, or any district meeting around the county, just a special district, they meet on a monthly basis. We haven't been meeting at all, and I just don't think that's acceptable. I think that it, it really raises the ire of some, and I've been hearing a lot about that, more from the parks than I have for the others. But I think we need to be able to, as a board, we are the Board of those agencies, we should be meeting at somewhat of a regular basis. So yesterday morning, Martha and I participated fully from start to finish at an event in Oregon City called COPE, and it was basically a cause of poverty. And it was a fascinating exercise to participate in that and understand the plight of people that are struggling and going to the service levels. It brought back to, actually, one of the reasons in which we actually built the Family Justice Center, is like the one-stop shop. And what I realized early on in that exercise, I was looking, I was looking for, you know, to see how and who was participating where. But I thought was valuable through that entire exercise was the plight of time spent and lost going and trying to get all those services and maintain your families and so forth, when either people are in poverty, whether or not they are homeless, or people falling into homelessness, or people that are just struggling to keep the roof over their head. Very valuable exercise. And I really think, and Martha and I spoke about that later, we ought to have that with our, with the complete commission and some of our key staff and go through that exercise to bring home, and some of our, some of our civic leaders to bring home the difficulty and, and speak to that, that going on. And you know, with the weather getting cold and the, you know, the inclement weather coming, it's nice to know that at least we have, number one, our program for instituting our warming shelters, and I'm sure we'll be doing that again, and also to know that this year especially, that after two or three years of working, that we've got the veteran shelter open, and we talked about that earlier. So those are two big, huge milestones, I think that are really important. One, the VSOs, and secondly, the shelter being, being in place. So just wanted to talk about that. And I'm going to end with something that I ended the last, last year's meeting just before, business meeting just before Veterans Day, and that is what is a veteran? It's something that, I learned about this. We don't know who the author is, but this is something that Mary Rathke has brought forth, year after year, for one of us to, to carry. So I'm going to read a poem. Again, the, the author's unknown. I always kind of get a little bit choked up, but, so here it goes. What is a veteran? Many of us known, have known a few veterans. Many things have been written about veterans. They are men and women who look the world in the eye. They feel the extra hard tug when the flag goes by. They step a little faster when they hear the beat of the military band. They are veterans. They are the doughboy of World War I, the GI, the GI of World War II. They have seen the Korean skies and fought the cold and silent battle of uneasy Berlin. They are veterans. They are sailors, soldiers, Marines. They are flyers, CBs, Coast Guard. They are veterans. They have the quiet dignity of a person who knows the price of freedom. They have the clear eyes of a person who respects themselves. They are courage living on Main Street. They are the patriotism mowing the lawn on Saturday afternoon. They are good citizenship with a smile on their face. They are veterans. They are peacetime soldiers, peacetime leaders. They are the first to volunteer in times of trouble and the last to come home. They are veterans. The veteran is a first-class fighter with a quiet walk and a sentimental grin. They are America's most honored citizen. They are our veterans.
Thank you, Paul. You may all not know, but I just returned from China. We went on a trade mission. Very valuable. If you ever have an opportunity to go to China, you should. Homelessness is virtually zero. And like Paul and I talked early, it's cultural. A family member could never imagine leaving their sister or brother out on the street. They take care of one another. You know, they are building homes, they build a Manhattan every year. So they are building a lot of homes, they're all high rises, which many of us would find difficult to live in. But homelessness is part of, is not something that happens, because it's not, it's not part, part of the culture itself. Our housing bond passed, I'm thrilled about that. I'm thrilled about that. I think what's important is that we're just, the timing's just right. You know, this money isn't going to happen tomorrow. It'll take a while, and we're about to embark on a housing needs assessment, which I think should address where and how we do a lot of this housing. As far as veterans, I wanted to mention that Ken is also in China. He distributes a pin that has a Marine and Chinese flag on it to everyone he meets. He's a great representative of a vet in China, and they really appreciate him. And he's just doing an outstanding job. We had a really good time. The infrastructure development in China is incredible. You know, they're building high-speed bullet trains. Five are under construction. When they're completed, that'll be 18. Their freeways are wonderful. One thing that's kind of neat, which I think we should do, and I've always thought that, they have cardboard police cars all along the freeway with flashing lights on them. And of course, at night, they're more significant, but during the day, from a distance, they look like police cars. So, traffic is fairly mild until you get into the cities where it's frightening. I mean, the cab driver driving me to the airport was just zipping through traffic like crazy until the president of China was at the airport, and they shut the freeways down, and we got out of the car and walked around a little bit. But China's amazing. Of course, it's not a republic. It's, they don't ask the citizens, you know, whether they want to build here or not. They just build here. But I'd say one of the most impressive things is they took, when we toured Blue Heron before they closed, I thought, this is frightening. All the metal, scrap metals, junk laying around. They've taken a huge factory that's a mile square, and they're converting it to office space, housing, entertainment, Starbucks. We found a Starbucks. Ken and I couldn't wait.
How was it?
It was hard to order, but it was, yeah, it was good. But they've taken this thing that would scare you to death if you saw it, and are slowly converting it. Before the Olympics, they closed this factory, which again, was massive. They built a new factory, which is very modern and doesn't pollute, and somewhere else. And then, they've planted billions, I'm not kidding, billions of trees all throughout, along the freeway, everywhere. They're trying to clean the air up. Solar plants everywhere, wind. It's amazing. You know, actually, when you fly over the US and you look down, you don't see many places with solar. You look down in China, everything has solar. It's pretty amazing. But it was a good trip, and I thought that Clackamas County really represented the county well. The state did too. However, at our conference, the display for Oregon was very disappointing. The United States was not taking part in the trade mission. Three states were, but we did have Boeing there and Caterpillar and a lot of the big manufacturers. But it was, I think, Ken said it was, it's the biggest conference center you've ever seen in your life. Three floors, you know, probably, I think he said, either 900 football fields. It was massive. But, you know, it was great. We were treated in our sister county quite well. They are looking forward to coming here. And by the way, the trade deficit, there is no trade deficit in Clackamas County. It's billions the other way. So, China has a trade deficit with Clackamas County in the four billion. Do you remember?
I don't.
It's somewhere between two and four billion. And so, we definitely told them that we're here, ready and willing to continue our relationship with China. And, you know, I'd say the most important thing is that friends don't fight, and we built friendships, and those friendships will last forever. And they look, they're very excited to come here again, and we're already planning the barbecues and the horse. Horse. Ken's going to have...
Can't we get them to come out in August for the rodeo? I mean...
Yeah, but I think they want to ride the horses.
Oh, they want to ride the horses. Other people ride them.
Yeah. So, with that, happy Veterans Day, and have a great weekend, and we'll see you the 29th in the evening.
Six p.m.
We're adjourned.